Ms. Rowland.
Yes.
How long have you been there?
Huh?
How long have you worked here?
Almost five years.
Five years.
I think I'm working on number five.
Do they have a, how do you, do you know this meeting before that? How did you hook up there?
I did not. A friend of mine posted it on, I mean, I'm just new from 4H and stuff. But a friend of mine posted it on Facebook.
We're sitting on the bottom.
Are we sitting at that spot? Where do you want to sit?
Eight.
Okay. Thank you.
Go on. Okay, good evening, everybody. Start just a little bit late, but today is Tuesday, February fifteenth. It's five after six, and we're gonna start the work session. So stand up, do the pledge of allegiance, and get the meeting started. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'd like to have moments of silence to honor the military, firefighters, road workers, sheriffs deputies, as they serve our community here in abroad. Thank you. Ms. Tracy Edwards, can we have a roll call, please?
Yeah, Trustee McQuarrie.
Yes, present.
Trustee McQuarrie. Trustee Beck, present.
Okay, so in the work session, the first thing is, we have on the list, it's old business. And first thing is the conduct and policies of township meetings. We talked about this in the first meeting, and then, we didn't have a second meeting in January because of COVID-19. But, and then the meeting, the first meeting in February, we got to the point where we normally do the comments by residents, and we forgot to tell you, we're not doing that anymore. So basically, and we've moved this several times in several meetings. We as a board can kind of do, conduct these meetings any way we want. There was Robert's rules and order. But we, as long as we stay and doing things the same. So as long as we agree on what we're doing, and we keep, can't change the rules and move the game. So that, the other thing that irritated me was the fact that when we're doing a resolution, we have a resolution on the floor, and we're talking about it. I don't want to have to break up a second. I don't really, I don't know if I want to vote on that. I don't know if I want to break a second on it, because I have some questions. So to me, are you okay with that, Sheila? We ought to be able to ask questions about the resolution before we second it today. What do you think?
Oh, I'm okay with that, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Because second would mean you might be in agreement with that.
Yeah. Okay, then the next one, and I said, we'll discuss that several times, the use of electronic time cards. I did find out that we are paying for that service, Sheila, did you know that? We're paying for that service. We pay TrackSmart $970 a year for the scheduling and the time clock in that system. So I don't know if they offer the system without the time clock feature in there, and how much less it was the. The person I talked to didn't think they did. It was, it's all or none. So.
Actually, we're looking at comparing PayCorps and TrackSmart.
Yes.
Because PayCorps would give us added benefit as far as on Tracy's side.
Okay.
She would have to enter out, enter in certain things, as opposed to TrackSmart. Even though you paid for it, she still wants, it got to her, she would still have to go back and redo it. So trying to see how we're both offer.
Mm-hmm.
And then go from there. I think we actually have.
You said those two ones, it just said, trusty, was it TrackSmart?
PayCorps.
PayCorps.
That we just have to kind of go in and look at and see if they offer the ability to track the fire department's schedule.
Yes.
Allow them to clock in and out, in addition to just automatically update in the system so it doesn't have the humid air.
Okay, yeah, it's got the humid air. I was throwing an idea out there, and we're just talking. Okay, so I also, I feel the need to have a person, back in the day, was Adrian, so TrackSmart would do it. Adrian looked at it, even if we have Tracy, a helper, you know, give a person in the office, they can do that. But I kind of see the idea, still needing a, what if they're fudging, clocking in and clocking out? Somebody has an ungodly amount of time. I still think, I still see the need for a human looking at over every pay period. I mean, my comments, guys, ladies?
There would be somebody, they still have to prove the timesheet.
Okay, the superintendent still approves the time, okay, okay.
The department head. They still have to go into PayCorps and approve the timesheet. Just like they were doing TrackSmart.
Okay.
Same as what they were doing TrackSmart. And if TrackSmart has that feature, all they would have to do is compare, and you can't get rid of it. You just compare what you get out of TrackSmart and the PayCorps, if that comes to that.
Yeah, imagine what we have to have each service, because they both do different things that no one does do. They don't want to do all of it.
I think, I think PayCorps may, but I don't ask.
Right, that's what, that's what we're trying to look at, to see.
Yeah, okay.
Compared apples to apples.
Okay.
You know, one might offer more, that one might not.
Okay.
It might be the same.
Okay, and the next one is a credit card policy, and there is a copy of that in your packet. You know, we're getting deemed on that in the audit, and been deemed a couple of different times. Ms. Edwards, isn't it supposed to be that the person who has a credit card signs out for it? And then you know who has it, and they're responsible for getting it, and the receipts can't be passed around, so to speak?
Well, yes, and it's supposed to be given back to me every time. I understand the inconvenience of that. I'm not here to do it. So we have to work around that aspect. So, but the receipts are definitely what the problem is with the credit card, because I'm not getting all the receipts. Like right now, for, and luckily I haven't done a subsidy wage yet, because March is not here yet. I don't have all the receipts for the credit cards for subsidy wage. There's one receipt missing.
And what department is that from?
Fire. There's only, there's only one, there's only one Amazon purchase, but I'm not sure, I don't know. It's an Amazon purchase of $159.99. Because on the credit card.
You aware of that, too?
Yeah, Tracy and I have spoken about it.
Okay, so you have the receipt or? You okay?
Oh, yeah. Too much alcohol. I gotta get with Lisa and see exactly what it was on the particular date that was ordered, but I think it was TMS.
I mean, if it's on Amazon, you should probably be able to pull the receipt up. I can't access. So somebody should be able to go in and pull that receipt up.
She can do that.
Can you get that, have her do that and get that to her, to Tracy?
I think it was $159.
$99.
Thank you, Chief.
Well, page two of settlement, that it gives the limit of a credit card transaction. And in this paperwork, no transaction may exceed, the paper said $4,500. What I have has $4,500 scratched out, $1,500 written in. But it's not initialized, initialized, but myself included, when we signed, I signed this. When the trustees signed that, that should have been initialized, so.
At that time, this was before they told us to do the initialize.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we did this fact before they had us on the audit there. So the $1,500, we could, if you have $4,500, it'd be a single purchase limit.
That's way too high.
That's more than your credit card, if you have on a credit card. Each credit, you only gave $4,000 on the credit card.
Well, I find it with $750, to be honest with you, I find it with $750, $750. For page two.
That, it was originally, and I went, because I did a resolution already. But it wasn't, it was before this.
Okay.
Resolu-, it was before this resolution. So there is a resolution in there back when, but when this resolution came, we raised it up.
Well, I think $750 is too low. I think there's going to be times where you need things other than $750. I'm okay with $1,500. Sheila, you taking the $15 or is that too high?
I think because right now we having a lot of issues with credit cards.
Yes.
That I think for now, the $750, and if you need more, we can talk with Tracy. But until we get a hold of these credit cards, we might need to kind of recap on that.
We only have one credit card right now, as the fire department.
Okay.
The new fire department credit card we got, because the other one's down right now.
So, but they have the ability to do their own Amazon and any?
Yeah, they have, they have Amazon account.
Okay, and then also their O'Valleys or whatever.
Yeah, oh, that's counter.
So that's stuff that has nothing to do with credit card?
It was for fifth third credit card.
Okay.
But this policy is not for just fifth third credit card, for all our credit cards.
But it's only one active now?
Only, only one fifth third credit card. So remember the policy is for all our credit, not just the credit cards for all the credits.
So like a Lowe's card or a, the Amazon card and all that, this, this retains to all cards?
It should, yeah.
So do you want?
Well, I'm not comfortable.
On all cards?
No, 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 I'm, I don't, I don't, I'm not happy with that.
So the thing, the thing is, I don't think, I don't think those type of things apply to Lowe's cards. I don't think they have them, so we got to figure out how we do that. I don't know how that works with Lowe's cards. But I didn't set that down.
Well, I think you're right, because we've had that problem at work with, with Home Depot, it's probably the same thing. And what they end up doing, what they ended up doing was separating everybody's card out. To me, it might be real pain, but everybody, my card with them is a separate account. And I have X amount of dollars, and everybody has a different amount. It's not grouped together like it was before. It was grouped together with an unlimited amount, with a top dollar on the, on the, on the account. And unless, unless it's stopped.
And I think that's the same. The problem, what our limit is, is we got to have purchase orders. We need to have purchase orders before they can go in. I got to have an actual purchase order. I noticed on the lot of invoices, we got this random purchase order that's $6,001. And Lowe's, they're still using that $6,001. And Lowe's, that's not a purchase order that we have.
Correct.
Is still being used?
Well, there's only one card available, I've shut down all the cards except for rights, school cuts, and tariffs.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Those are the ones that have all the cards, because we're getting out.
Now, is that a, and so we have the Lowe's card, and we have a John Deere card, what other cards do we have?
So we don't have a card down, there's another counter account. I don't know who set that up either. That wasn't involved.
We have the paper, right?
Yeah, I, I think he did. Yeah, we have the paper. Some people that supposedly be using that are the people getting, the road department are getting uniforms.
Well, I think the thing is, yes. And if they want to get uniforms, then we'll go a different way, and then they can give them. The superintendent would ever give them the credit card to use, or provide them whatever, but I don't know if I want to keep that policy going.
That's why I actually said that we shouldn't increase that limit, because right now, it's just too much going on with credit cards.
Again, there's no limit on that, I don't think, there's no limit. Just go in and charge. But you got to have a purchase order, that's what.
So can.
That's what we're looking for, purchase order.
With, with fifth third, that credit card, you can put a limit on it, but you can't change the limit. They don't care if it's road department, the fire department, or trustees. It's the same limit for everybody on all sales. It's not different cards and amounts.
I can, I can adjust the money for that card. Like, for instance, at first, the Italian cheese card only had $2,000 in it, so. And the single purchase one was $750, everybody else was $1500. But they all had $4,000. I can adjust anytime. I can adjust that one.
I think it's only.
I can't do anything with the other.
The others?
Because those are done by, I think most of those are sent when you bank.
So we just have people like going to various stores and opening up accounts?
That's what hap-, that's what happened, not various people, but I think most of those accounts. In fact, I remember probably, I think, the Lowe's account, and the John Deere was open by Randy, if I'm not mistaken. But I did sign the paperwork, and I still signed the paperwork, but I didn't have any, make the decision on who opened it. I hadn't signed the paperwork.
Okay, so to do, and I, I deal with a road company, and I was in there getting stuff from the top of the hill. And I questioned them, and they said, no, you have an account in there, and it's open. So we have a road yard that we have an account with. And, because I wouldn't be able to rent, because come the summertime, we're doing road work. We're living, like, they rent a skid steer, rent a grinder, asphalt grinder, do things to do road work. And we were not financially set yet to buy things, we needed to rent for a day or two. Get our feet wet, make sure we knew what we're doing, and how to do this stuff. So there's, there's an account that's open too, that I didn't know about till I asked him. No, you got an account here.
Just for me, I asked Tracy, like, if you could kind of name off some of the people we owe as far as credit cards. She couldn't, because there are so many out there.
Sure.
And she, until she gets the bill, she doesn't know.
Yeah, well, it's something like, where does the bill come from?
I don't like that at all.
Right, and so it has to be, we have to ensure that when people decide they want to open an account, or they have a need, that they first need to talk to the department head.
Yes.
Because if you have all these accounts open, who's to say that another person is not going to open another account at the same location where we already have one open? It's just under a different.
Okay, now that you say that, I remember Randy asking me about opening a Lowe's account up. And I said, yes, back in that day, he was the only one who was going to use it, and I trusted him. And he was going to do it, well, he's left, and that card's been passed around.
Right, right.
Well, I know what happened was, somebody came in and got, I know who came in. That's the minister, the minister that came in, and got all the road departments, each employee card. And I think that's when it got, the red card, school cuts already had a card, I think. And so, and he had a card too. I had one time, and then Adrian even had a card.
Credit or Lowe's?
Lowe's.
No, that's wrong.
So I can't, I can't see why the township wouldn't just be over all of us. So if we have a Lowe's card, Jefferson Township has the Lowe's card, and then the New School have a grass one. It's not, the fire department has a Lowe's card, the road department has a Lowe's card, we have a Lowe's card with the limit on it. Instead of having three different Lowe's cards.
So do we want to set up that the East Department has one person that can hold on that card? Or do you want Tracy to hold on all time with me? If I want to go make a purchase, Tracy, I need the card. Use it and give, and give back.
I don't know if that would be too much for Tracy. Honestly, I think that, you know, if, if we know that there's a purchase, like, say the water. You all need the water, and you know you do the water here, right? So if you know you're going to do the water, you just already in advance, say, hey, Tracy, on this day, will you come in and get this car? Or can you authorize, call up there, and tell them to come and get the skid of water, or something other than have all these.
The problem is, if you do a purchase order, then you're not even going to need a car, right? It's only that, to me, the credit card should only be emergency. It's only be an emergency, really. And if you can't, if you, because you got to write a purchase order in, in the hand even if it's an emergency.
So then you like the idea, and I'm not saying it's bad, let me start with. Like the idea that we have a, actual accounts in different places where they can, they got to buy things. So if we use a credit card for emergencies only, then day to day operations, we need to be able to go to different places and buy our daily stuff.
There's going to be times where, but there's going to be times when people won't take it, if they want a credit card, if you order it on the phone. That's what I consider an emergency to it. You can't, you can't use anything, but they, they won't take the check. They won't, they got to have the credit card. That's one of the things that will be an emergency, because it sounds like an emergency, but it is, because you need it, you want to, you can order it that way. So you got to have a credit, but I'm saying, otherwise, you got to do a purchase order. Either way, you got to do a purchase order.
Yes, I agree.
So if you, for, you use the water example, you know you're going to buy that water, you got to write a purchase order for that. At that time, when you go purchase it, you get the credit.
So when you know.
Or, or even know what the amount is, I can write a check, but it takes a little bit longer, because you guys got to still sign it.
Right, right.
I mean, it could come down, that is not something, the water is not something they couldn't write. That's probably a bad example, but that's something you couldn't write a check and take it up to them, and they would give you a lot.
Yeah, okay.
I just, I think that we definitely need to get a handle on all of these credit cards. It's, it's a lot.
Well, the state does, they're proud of them. They, they make it hard for us to use credit cards anymore.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I make this, can I make a comment here?
Yes.
Is that permitted? Dealing with listening to you talk about your credit cards, and would it be possible, just a thought, to go to, like, you're talking about needing equipment to rent. If you went to a specific place, and I'm just going to use the example, if you went to Brookville Rental. Okay, and you did a PO, a blanket PO at Brookville Rental, my guys can have up to $1,000 in rentals. And you went to the places that you want them to go to, not my brother-in-law's store down the road, but places, and you had your POs in place, and your road department knows if they need a tool rental, they go to Brookville Rental. They don't go to Pickwood, they don't go to Dayton Rental. You go to here. And then that way, everything that you found would be the places that you have already pre-picked for them to go. And that would be the only places they would go.
Yes.
And those would be the only bill, willing companies that you would be dealing with.
And only certain names would be allowed to do that.
Exactly.
That's always a good idea.
Just a call.
Set that up, and the credit card, you're going to have to go, we can sign the credit card out, Tracy. I mean, just, I know this will work on you, but I kind of like, need that.
And they would be back at the credit card.
These are credit cards for emergency only, and if they need them, they're going to have to come to you, and then we're going to sign them. But I don't see the use of, we need to stop using them, like, any.
Exactly.
Yeah.
At least, at least, there is now, we can get all of them.
Right.
Yeah.
When we go sign those checks, there's a lot of different charges for a lot of different places.
Yeah. Okay, anyway, I just want to talk about that, thanks. The next one will be.
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry. You guys have an account with us. And if you bring a fire truck or a truck in, we call you and say, Mr. Smith, you're going to need kingpence when you need big trucks, or Sprinter will come in the back, like we did Sprinter in one of the avalanches. But you don't bring them to us. You don't bring them to, we do the work, like, it comes to the city garage, then city garage runs it up. But you guys have a contract with us. You guys have the towers.
Okay.
And how we do it?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you know that?
No, I didn't know that.
Ma'am, I said, well, um, I, I told them, I said, I'm going to talk to them about these, you don't need to make any contracts with us. So.
That's, that's what I'm doing, I mean, so.
So you, you take them.
And who, who, who?
Acme Spring.
Acme Spring, Acme Spring, and they're over a hundred years now. And we do the city garage work, because they can't do suspension work.
But they send, but if they find us suspension work, when we send to the city garage, then they send that to us, Acme Spring.
We bring, so then.
Then you bar it up.
Yeah, and then I do all the electric work for them. I do the avalanches and stuff, when they have shorts and fire. But the city garage, city, city stuff, the city garage, and then they send it to us.
But it's okay, so.
Well, we just take them out of the loop and send them to you, so we're already having a.
On certain things.
Right, since. We do all this stuff. We do breaks and all this, but anyway, what I'm saying, it goes through county garage, and county garage, so it gets us.
Yeah, because we never went to other places outside of that, so I think that's where we're going. Thank you.
Okay, so the next one is the paving project in Berlin.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, what? So, uh, we're going to, so are the citizens going to, what, on the credit card? We keep them to say? Stacy, please, is that what we talked about?
I think they changed, you guys wrote a resolution, you know.
Yeah, 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 I'm just saying, right now, we thinking about, are we thinking about, I'm not saying we're voting on that. That was, what was the kind of idea? Are we going to do anything, or just another day? Another day discussion, we just.
No, no.
I mean, as far as votes.
I personally lean on, you know, going with, sort of what Linda talked about. And that way, we don't have credit cards on the place.
Okay, so I know that, but my, what I use was due to suffer, we have an account there, we have a counter at Acme Spring. How many other places do we have?
Yes.
And we set accounts with, that we can use.
How can we find out? I can't give you this, but there's, like, that's what a lot of people have asked me, and we got tons in UAM. I got a hundred, two hundred pages of vendors in UAM.
Yeah.
That hasn't been cleaned up, and needs to be cleaned up. I said it a long time ago. A few years ago, got a few cleanups from my fire department, but not a lot would be taken out. That's, it's a long list, and.
Well, can we, can we get the list together?
Yeah.
And then we can schedule a meeting and kind of go down the list and see what we're using. We'll even consolidate what we're not using. And because when we sign those, those checks is so many, and.
So, what, can you give me that list of vendors off of UAM?
Yeah, we'll, we'll. It's got to be on the electronic copy, because it's.
That's fine. Well, do that, and then I, I'll go down through there, and I mean, we don't need 5,000 vendors. We, you know, pick, go down through there and start calling them, and we still have an account with you, or we a good standing with you? Can we use this? And what names do you have on this account? And whose name do you use?
Is it still open?
Huh?
Is it still open?
Right, I think we need to do that, we'll put it out in the next meeting, let's do that.
Well, I can, see, I have one, 1099, that was sort of, I was going to use laughter, for instance.
Okay.
I've done it for, I didn't do it yet this year.
As in last year, as in 2020?
Twenty-one, twenty-one.
Oh, these.
So I would give you the one, I haven't done the one for 2021, I haven't got it.
Yeah, but you got to go for 20. Okay, so.
I mean, but it's there, I could print it out, I just haven't done the 1099. And that takes some time.
Or can you just show me, I mean, I was listening around in there, and you just show me how to pull it up, and then.
That's a good place to start.
And then, then that way, we could start.
So that's good. Okay. So are we done with credit cards?
I think so, I just wanted to know what, what came out of that. That's, that's the issue I had, we discussed that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't do anything.
Then we just go on, and then three minutes down the road, we're back out again.
Well, we've had several, the credit cards have been discussed in a couple of different meetings anyway, so.
Yeah, the last one I had was no, no care, it was back in November. I had pulled out my copy, and said it was December 7th, maybe, that we discussed. Well, we were going to discuss it, I take that back, we sent an email out, but we never did.
In the short term, though, I think credit cards would be for emergencies only. You, you said, well, we got one to use anyways, that's kind of, that's kind of a limit.
Right, but and we're going to have to have another one for these Italian cheese stuff that we got to get to a full online.
Right.
So we'll have two, because we got to, we got to put out those licenses, and if they get that on the list to discuss.
No.
No, no, it's not, because we were just talking to the gentleman today.
Yeah, but, but Sheila and I have been talking, we got the list from Brian Peters. And there's stuff that they took, they stepped up. There's only two or three things running there we got to get on the new credit card right away. The other ones we just got, because most of them, 23, 24, 25. We just got to get our name change on it, get them a card. So we got to get a credit card available to pay for the, to put it online, for instance, the Office 360.
365. So they do an automatic, they do an automatic payment withdrawal on that.
Yeah, we, they were charging us, they were charging Buckeye, and Buckeye was charging us.
And we got, yeah.
Yes.
So when we get with the new vendor, then we'll already have it set up on a credit card. Well, we can just go ahead and do that versus. Where we can just go ahead and then deal versus them charging the IT.
And go there, they can go there and they can, because we're gonna use our internet for that, and access their license.
Before you had, uh, we, we had a master account. You knew you had, you had Township trustees, we had a card, the fire department had a card, the road department had a card and all that before. So you want to make this one, you want to make this one the cards, the one that's, it's just strictly used for office?
I had one that was just sitting there suspended.
It, it was office.
I said admin on it, so I got one that's sitting there, says admin. I never, I just, I never, I never, I never closed it out. Because, because, because there were problems with.
And what I'm getting at, Sheila, is, is the card that we're using for these regular payments like this, needs to be, needs to be a card by itself. And you're expecting this every month and whatever. There needs to be a separate card by itself, nothing else.
Right.
Not given to somebody else to use.
And that's what I said, and she, she was suggesting that, I hold on to it, because nobody needs to have it.
Nobody needs to have it.
Right.
Cause it's for that purpose only, IT. Okay.
So now we're.
Uh, well, I think.
Yes.
What about training, like online training? Do we just pay for that ourselves on online? Cause that was my concern, I never was ever.
Online, online.
Like I take a lot of online training for fiscal officer, OTA and stuff like that. And those trainings, you would take credit cards, so then I, I usually put online and get reimbursed.
Is that the only, you're the only one that does?
No, other people can do it too, just I, I've taken, especially since the last year, we had COVID. Everybody does stuff online. And it used to be we needed a credit card if we had, couldn't get taxes in, but then, then happened this year like that. I think we got Joe's taxes, but I didn't ask you.
That sounds like going forward and getting a credit card again with different names on it then. And maybe you want, need one for the fiscal officer.
What?
One for the, and one for admin, one for the fire.
You might not, you just probably need a card that when something happens, they have to give somebody to use.
Does the fire department do any online training?
Some of the people do, yes.
Is there any training for the road department?
But your online training, you usually can get bill for, right?
Mostly online training does not cost us anything.
Good. Okay.
Before, it's like 20 dollars, that number, OTA, 20 dollars, 20 dollars.
So can you, can you pay it and just do the reimbursement versus having a credit card?
Yeah, I could do that.
That would seem like it'd be.
I still have to use my credit card and then be reimbursed, yeah.
Yeah.
But I just stop for other people who couldn't do that.
Right, right.
Might be a card for them.
Well, since they're just free, they don't do anything on, online and, um, totally trustees. If we decide to do it, we'll just have to go through the same process.